First pledge allegiance, please. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Saints, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call members, please.
Gary Roth.
Here.
Carl Kinsky.
Here.
Jerry Bowman.
Here.
Joe Prince. Tony Grass.
Junie Ewing.
Here.
Kathy Walz. Justin Donovan.
Here.
We have a quorum.
brew of the agenda.
I'll move.
Have a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Verbal amendments from July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Citizen input. I take it everybody here is for agenda items. Old business. Whoops. Forgot one. Introduction of evidence.
I have the comprehensive plan, city code. You have the staff reports at your seat. The staff report for S U B zero zero one dash two six, which is the second bullet point, is slightly different than what you originally received. We just, it's a motion to pass a resolution instead of just an approval, but that's the only change the staff report.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Do I have a motion to accept?
I'm submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Old business.
I have none, sir.
We'll go into new business. Uh, to operate a guest lodging establishment at one thirty-five North Third Street, a single-family residential structure.
I think the owners are in the audience.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Well, you're used to this by now, aren't you?
I've done this once or twice.
Keep doing it, please.
Right, right. Um, I'm sure you all know who we are, Jason Ashley Stackley. Um, the house at one thirty-five North Third is the little last shotgun house in town. Um, after six years, we finally finished it. Put it on the back burner a lot of times. Um, so we're requesting to do Airbnb VRBO with that property.
I just have one question. Are you calling it Angles Highway or Angels Highway?
Angels. That's probably my fault. I spelled it wrong.
It wasn't like a deal breaker.
It's supposed to be.
It says Angles, so it's just.
It's supposed to be Angels.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was the only stupid question.
Say it's a pretty straight house. There's not many angles there.
I think I should keep it. Yeah.
Anybody questions? Comments? Questions? Comments? Questions? Comments?
None for me.
Motion carries.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second roll call, please. Gary Roth.
Yes. Carl Kinsky.
Yes.
Jerry Bowman.
Yes.
Junie Ewing.
Yes.
Justin Donovan.
Yes.
Motion carries five oh three. I'll put it in the mail to you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep going.
Thank you so much.
We have some address that we're gonna hand to you.
Thanks, guys.
Jerry would take some of those.
Should I read the S U B zero zero one dash two six demo? Why didn't I?
You don't need to.
Uh, next one, McBride Land Growth LLC is requesting to subdivide the forty-nine-point-oh-four-acre parcel head along the northern side of the five-hundred-six-hundred block of Progress Parkway.
You don't.
Okay. Um, McBride came to us a few months ago for rezoning. Um, and during that rezoning, they presented a, uh, a layout for their subdivision. This is them going through the subdivision process. This is the preliminary plat. Uh, this plat is slightly different from what you saw then. I believe that was a hundred-and-fifty-seven homes. This is a hundred-and-thirty-five homes. Uh, and we have some folks from McBride in the audience if you have questions.
Is it a hundred-and-thirty-five?
Hundred-and-thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
What was that initial number?
I'll start out like that.
I think it was originally one seventy-three and then one fifty-seven.
Well, it was one fifty. It was one fifty-four, one fifty-seven before, and then it went to one seventy-three.
Okay.
And now we're at the one thirty.
One thirty-seven.
So why is, uh, why is it going down?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Good to see everybody again.
Hello.
I'm Katie Perucca with McBride. I think you all know Jeremy Roth, and then we have, um, our engineer here tonight, Rodney Arnold from Sterling. So, um, yes, you'll notice the plan looks a little bit different from the last one, um, when we presented with our, our zoning, uh, request. Um, the reason why it looks a little bit different, there were some site conditions that as we went through our due diligence process, um, we encountered, namely, there are a few mine vents that, um, have to stay, uh, that we needed to work around, and then there are a few, like, sinkhole areas that we needed to work around, so we adjusted our layout some. Also, we did listen to your feedback, and I know the Board of Aldermen, um, had really missed those cul-de-sacs, cul-de-sacs from the first plan, um, that we were originally working with. So, we were able to work, work some cul-de-sacs back in, and so, in doing all of that, yes, we did have to unfortunately lose some lots, but it does make for what we think a really smart, uh, layout and a good, efficient plan, so.
I just have another question. As I recall, and my memory is by no means, but, when you were here initially talking about the zoning, you said that you anticipated, but in no way promised, that you thought that the cheapest price for a house was gonna be two hundred thousand, if I recollect correctly.
Yes.
And now you've got fewer lots. So, one of the, one of the ideas behind this development was to have more affordable housing. And I'm just wondering, and I understand there have been other changes in the, the economy as well, but does this mean that the cheapest anticipated house, again, understanding that you're talking about hypothetical, is gonna be more than two hundred, and if so, what are we, what are we talking about since we're trying to get affordable?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm actually gonna throw that to you.
The goal would still be to have that starting price start in the ones.
In the ones, okay.
Yep, yep. That should still be achieved.
Okay.
Even with the reduced, uh, with this new layout, there's, there's less lots, but we're also able to reduce some infrastructure costs.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, you'll also notice there's more common ground, obviously, now, so I think it's like about twenty acres, um, or so of common ground. So, um, that kind of accounts for the reduction, reduction in lots. On kind of on that same point, I know in the staff report, there's, um, a suggestion of incorporating, right now, we have the sidewalks on the one side of the street. So, I, I know that there's a, um, recommendation that sidewalks go on both sides of the street, which, um, you know, we're certainly willing to do, but kind of wanting to throw that back to you all, just in terms of, again, that's adding more infrastructure, which, you know, obviously, that's gonna, that is gonna impact price, price point of these homes, um, keeping in mind that we do already have them on the one side, and we've got the trail, um, you know, to promote, like, the walkability. So, we're willing to do it, but do wanna raise the point that, you know, anytime we're adding more infrastructure, it does, the price of the homes are gonna be adjusted to some degree.
So that was my recommendation based on, you know, a board focus of walkability. Um, you know, we've been repairing a lot of sidewalks. We've been adding sidewalks. Uh, part of the focus of this subdivision is access from, you know, the commercial district out to Progress Parkway and on to, um, the water park and things of that nature. Uh, again, they're on one side, so you still have that access, but my recommendation was both sides, but you all can choose to pull that out if you so think.
I'm wondering, yeah. Cause I get what you're saying, and I see people, it's so, it's so strange when you walk, when you drive down the street into town, the sidewalk stops over here and starts over there, but people don't cross the street. They're walking in danger. It's really strange. What if you did on the main drag and just on this street, so that if someone wanted to walk from the Baptist church or ride their bike, and then they could make it up the sidewalk to the community center?
So they're.
Then you wouldn't have to have it all the way back here.
Their proposed plan has sidewalks on every street.
No, I'm talking both sides.
Okay.
Just on the main street.
I got you.
So that it makes the main drag more walkable, but just one sidewalk side for the rest of it.
I got you.
Cause that's the cut-through street. I don't know. What do y'all, do you think it would matter?
I mean, you look at other areas of St. Genevieve where we have no sidewalks and then limited sidewalks. You know, personally, I feel that sidewalks on all sides isn't as ideal. Um, you know, and again, it just kinda, you know, kinda promotes that walkability. Look at other similar subdivisions and.
And that will go in as one, right? Cause Valley Springs, you know, was our last subdivision. That was up to the property owner to put in as they built, but you have hit and miss there until the subdivision's full. This would be part of the initial project, correct?
No, we, we would build those as we build the homes.
But we have. As far as grading, yeah.
Every inch of the world will build all a hundred-and-thirty-five houses, so, yeah, they will get finished. But if you put them in with, when you pour the streets and you put them in with the rest of the industry, they just get torn out.
The driveways, yeah, engrading to them.
Yep.
But that would still mean that they would get it done and you wouldn't have to wait for the owner to do it, which I think was your point, wasn't it?
What's that?
Your point, though, is that the owners didn't always wanna do it, and they're saying that when the house is built, they'll put it in, so.
No, it was required out there that they had to go in. But you have, you know, if you got three lots in a row, they don't get built on the right of way, then you got sidewalk, open space sidewalk.
Yeah, on both sides.
Mm-hmm.
How, how will you decide where you're gonna build that first? Do you build them all in a row, so you do do the sidewalks as they go? Or are you just gonna build the whole subdivision?
No, not necessarily. We will probably, um, I don't think we'll open up the whole community for sales initially. I mean, I think what, and we haven't made these decisions, we'll strategically maybe open up a third. I mean, we wanna have a variety of lots, uh, so the options are there for the buyers. Um, but, um, yeah, we, we probably do it in, in maybe two or three.
Section, yeah. And as you do that, you'll put sidewalks in, and it'll stop.
Yes.
As you expand.
Within each, within each little phase, um, you know, it's, it'd be the buyer's choice on which lot they're selecting, so we wouldn't go necessarily right.
Well, would, would Bosler Drive all open up at one time?
Um, yes, the streets will be open. The streets will be open, but we just might not.
I mean, as far as selling the lots, to try to thin, you know, to fill that main drag up where you get the sidewalk through there right away?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't decided yet which, which areas we will.
Cause that would have a little bit of each.
No.
To it.
I mean, sitting here looking at it, yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, cause it has, it has all the lots.
Righty, plus it would get that sidewalk through there quicker.
Yeah.
And do you kind of base those decisions around how you're building and what area, based on what, selling?
Um.
Or where the demand is at?
Ye- yes. I mean, it, it's, it's just better for, from a selling standpoint and marketability if a buyer walks in and they don't have a hundred-and-thirty-seven choices. If, if they're focused on, you know, if it's, if it's Bosler Drive, and that's, you know, however many lots it is, let's say seventy lots, then, um, it also, it, it looks and creates more activity and, um, maybe a sense of, um, um, you know, demand. If people think, hey, I, I really wanna live on Bosler Drive, and there's only ten opportunities left, I better buy a house.
Plus, it looks better with more of them right together than scattered as far as numbers of.
Right.
Taken.
Right.
Going back to this, the sidewalk issue, do, do any of the other subdivisions in town, like, I don't, no, I can't think in my mind whether St. Genevieve has sidewalks on one side, both sides, no side.
They don't have any.
They don't have any sidewalks at all?
No, and Roger Edition and International, which both predate our current code, are hit and miss, but there are sidewalks there, but it, like, someone said here tonight, there could be sidewalk for two lots, no sidewalk for three lots. Uh, Valley Spring is certainly the most consistent.
Okay.
Both sides. Valley Springs, both sides. The only places that are missing are the lots that still haven't been built, which may be down to four or five at this point.
And then there is, there's a green space between the sidewalk and the street?
Yes. That's on the plan. So right here, I know it's tiny, but you can see, you have a street, green space, something.
Okay.
The two different ones are, this would be a thirty-foot, uh, pavement, a twenty-six-foot pavement, but yeah, there is a green space. Sorry if I'm jumping in. If I can scroll this for anybody who wants to see something different. That's busy, but there's a lot of information there. Yeah. Are there gonna be any of the mine vents within close proximity of the homes?
So we have, um, we're actually in the process of, uh, pending an agreement with Mississippi Lime, but, um, there's a one-hundred-foot no-build zone that's required by code, so there definitely won't be any, I mean, we can't, so, yeah.
I, my concern was, those things aren't as loud as what they used to be, but they used to be.
Like a jet engine.
Those will sound like jet engines, so I kinda wondered.
We actually had, got the opportunity, we took a little field trip, and got to go tour the mines, and they took us to kind of a modified mine vent that has, like, the block building and the silencers, so we got kind of a, a sense, but, yeah.
I think the two that they're not capping here and down here, I'm not sure. No?
Second, second one I think is correct. The, the first one is, um, behind my, um, behind that one-twenty-seven is one of them. So I'm lucky, yep, right there.
So this one won't be capped and this one won't be capped? The others, they're on here, but they say capped.
Correct.
So what was that sound like with, within that hundred feet? Was it pretty?
Was kind of like, um.
Or something like that?
Like a vacuum cleaner, not a jet engine. Kinda like white noise, just like a constant sort of hum, yeah.
We don't have any concerns of selling. Next to those.
Got you.
So is our approval addressing sidewalks as an issue, or, I mean, it sounds like, I don't wanna jump the gun, but it sounds like we're kind of agreed on the reduced number of lots. Is sidewalk something that we need to decide this evening, or?
I think they would appreciate it because their next step is a final plat.
Okay.
So you certainly don't have to go with my recommendation, but yeah, if we want that, then we should let them know tonight.
Yeah, I think, you know, when we look back and you guys were passing the proposition, the big thing was creating a walkable community, and I, you know, and you do achieve that with a single sidewalk, but really, a dual sidewalk is kind of the standard that, you know, I, I think we kinda wanted to set forth, and, you know, I personally, I'd like to see it stick with that.
So shall we make a motion? Are we ready to begin? So I move that we ask for sidewalks on both sides of the street for the McBride Development.
Would you mind reading the motion?
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Which one do you mean?
So I move that we approve, uh, resolution P Z zero zero one dash two six, progress point subdivision preliminary plat with the following conditions. Do I have to read all the conditions?
No. With the conditions listed.
With the conditions listed.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion and the second. Roll call, please.
Gary Roth.
Yes.
Carl Kinsky.
Yes.
Jerry Bowman.
Yes.
Junie Ewing.
Yes.
Justin Donovan.
Yes.
Motion carries five oh three.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will send you. That's included. I'll send you a copy of the resolution. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. What's that? Consider what it looked like.
Derek Jacob. Which one was that?
Down on, uh, what is that, Third Street, Darren's house?
I know the shotgun house that we're talking about.
Oh, it was a much bigger, but. Oh, yeah. It is much bigger.
I grew up in the south.
But, uh, we have a question about order of operations from here for permitting.
Okay, you asked that. Yep.
So Rodney will have, like, detailed construction as proven plans ready in mid-Decemberish. Um, is it, so before we get a permit to break around, does the final plat have to get approved before?
You can do an infrastructure permit. That's what you're talking about, right?
Yes, yeah.
We can do that.
And, and that's just a staff approval through those improvement plans, or does that infrastructure permit require A and Z or board approval?
The infrastructure doesn't. I believe it's on here, but I will send it to our engineer, obviously.
Right.
Yeah. So there, it'll be a, a process, but I, you can do that ahead of the final plat.
Okay, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Wind is a stormwater.
So the final plat, which we'll come back to you all, will have stormwater details. Um, I'm trying to think about water, sewer details. I mean, this stuff is on the preliminary, but details. Um, trying to think, uh, I know the stormwater is your biggest interest. Um, that should include the, uh, agreement for either an HOA, the easements and covenants that would come with.
So we would have probably two, two different documents, a, a set of detailed construction plans with all that stormwater, sewer water information, and then what we often call a record plat that has the easements that subdivide the lots, that'd be a separate document. So we would bring all of those?
Yes, for the final plat approval, and that will all come back to you all. But there could be infrastructure improvements before all that.
Yes.
And when does the decision to have an HOA or not?
So that decision is up to them, but that's.
We all make that decision.
That's what.
There will be an HOA.
Okay.
Yes. It seems like a good idea to have everything taken care of and not, not have to worry about it, yeah?
Yes.
And that'll cut, that will also be what comes to you in the final, uh, final plat, final approval. Any other questions?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing to bring up in new business, yeah, kinda maybe more for discussion. Um, we've seen some municipalities take some steps to, um, safeguard, I don't know if that's the right term to use against the data centers that have come in. Jefferson County recently changed some of their planning zoning regulations.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, and I know St. Charles County and some of those, um, I think that's something that would be worthwhile for us to explore. I'm not saying it's a good or a bad thing in terms of the data centers from St. Genevieve. Um, we've kinda seen some of the hell in the state that those are extremely taxing on infrastructure. Minimal benefit, again, like, not taking side. We should be able to look at it and say, we're gonna allow it, we're not gonna allow it.
I can certainly, you know, bring some data back, no, no pun intended, some data back to you and just talk about if we'd like to, you know, we can certainly adopt, you know, or amend our ordinance to put those in a special use category, or just, you know, uh, not have them.
I'd like, I mean, I'd like to know what areas right now, if we kept with the status quo, they could put them in. And also, if you could get the actual language of the Jefferson County ordinance, just so we could see it as a prototype and decide if it was good, or if we didn't understand what they were getting.
I would think at this point, if one came, it would, it would be allowed in an industrial, but you're asking kind of, well, where is that?
Right, and I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't sound like an industry, Tim, righty, not like a conventional industry, like they're building something.
I'll get that information, get it back to you, and when we meet next, I'll, I'll highlight it for you.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Another issue I'd like us to address with that is, um, from what I'm reading, they come in and use so much energy, but they're not paying for the infrastructure of the energy, whoever is making energy is charging the residents to build the AI facility's capacity. And so, energy prices in Virginia and Texas and other places are just going to the roof for people who live there.
That could be a question for citizens.
But I mean, we could say, we could say, you know, possibly that if anyone came in, and we don't have a county, we really need a county zoning, that's just me, um, to basically say, if you're allowed to come here, you pay for the infrastructure, you build the new energy system that supplies you, not the community. I mean, that's a win-win.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But they're also polluting, so, yeah, they're issues. And as you said, I haven't read many benefits except for the folks who own it.
Yeah, I mean, you, you know, that, what I'm seeing some up north is they're occupying some otherwise unused spaces. That's not a bad thing, but again, if they do so at, at, at a point where they're starting to, you know, it'll be a detriment to, you know, the citizens and the businesses already in the county, then it's a, you know, then that's, I think, where we can afford some protection.
Yep.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yep. One more while we're in it.
Yes, sir.
Do we ever address container homes?
I mean, there's nothing in our code that addresses container homes. I, I haven't been asked. Uh, I don't think that would fit within our code. Can you have a container? Yes, for storage, but, um, are, you know, you'd have to get a building permit, and I don't think that's in the I B C right now.
I didn't know.
I've seen some, but the ones I've seen are out in.
Yeah.
God's country.
One more thing, Dan. Um, maybe this is because I live in, on Main Street, and I'm really happy that the Autobahn and all those things are, are making money, bringing people in. It's good for everybody. But what I was wondering if we could put in, I think, actually, St. Mary has this, a, um, decibel rating, so that whatever event we're having, at a certain decibel level, someone comes in and says, here's the meter, it's not hard to have one. And you've got to cut your base, you've got to do this because you're, it's interrupting life in the community. I don't know if you've ever been in your house and had the base kind of beat through you like a heartbeat, hour after hour, when you're going, oh, God, where am I gonna go? Um, that's only happened a couple of times, but it just seems like maybe we could be, with more events coming in, which is a good thing.
I think the only thing we all, or we, is in terms of timeframe.
We have a noise nuisance. It's defined, but there's not a decibel level in the definition.
Right, and we got till ten A M., which is okay on the weekend. I can leave it at that. Yeah, I think it's ten P M. They don't always observe that, but they're close. But it's just, can you be in your house while they're there is the issue.
I can come up with some more.
I can come up with some more. Motion to adjourn.
You got a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.